So, as you know, the PCC, we are appointed by the FASB trustees. Just a brief refresher of the composition of the PCC. We have four practitioners, three users, and three preparers that make up the PCC. And we are, under our new, our revised charter, the primary advisory body to the FASB for private company financial reporting matters. So what that means actually in our, in our charge is that we do a lot of things behind the scenes before they get to exposure draft to advise the FASB of any private company issues that may be hidden in a project that they're actually working on so that they can get that incorporated on the front end and not the back end. So the four ASUs that we'll talk about briefly were good. They were things that absolutely needed to happen for private company financial reporting. What we're hoping with our new charge is that we'll get those issues addressed on the front end so we don't have to go back and try to change something. So that is really where we're hoping to make the biggest impact going forward. We do have some things that we, we use our private company decision-making framework, the PCD MF is what we call it. And we do have a framework where we have to decide if a potential issue fits under the framework, should we take it on? And there are five modules in that framework. Recognition and measurement, which I'll tell you is a high hurdle to get. Display, presentation, disclosures for private companies, effective dates, and then transition methods. So we have modules for each one of those items to see if a issue might need to be accounted for or recognized differently or displayed differently for a private company than a public company. And those are the actual things that we look to, to see whether or not a project fits our, our charge. So there are five, four PCCs ASUs that have been issued, and I'm going to flip it to Mike to, to talk about those.
Thank you, Candy. So, you know, I guess I'm going to start off with the usual disclaimer. So anything that I say are clearly my views, and I'm just hoping it's GAAP because I think what you'll find is that I use a lot of colloquial terms or plain English terms that don't necessarily reconcile exactly to the codification, but hopefully, you know, it's for the most part correct. You know, these are the finalized PCC alternatives. We're not going to go through them in detail. This is the only slide. And really, I'm putting this up here because it's the scope of the next ASU which was issued in 2016, right? These are the PCC ASUs where the PCC was trying to deal with preferability and the effective date. Again, they are the amortization of goodwill over a period of 10 years or less, the ability to reduce or recognize fewer intangible assets in a business combinations, that being non-competition agreements and customer relationships that can't generate discrete cash flows without the use of other business or assets in a business. Then there is the opportunity for private companies to elect a simplified hedge accounting approach to better reflect, or what many view is a better reflection, of a variable-rate debt instrument with a interest rate swap or a plain vanilla interest, interest rate swap. And then probably the most popular alternative, it's either between that or goodwill, which is the scope exception to VIE guidance when you have leasing arrangements under common control. So originally, a lot of these ASU, all these ASUs had original effective dates and transition provisions. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because the original transition provision, for example, in goodwill was 2015 for a calendar year-end. And what that meant is, is that you would have to actually determine whether you would like to apply the alternative or not. And with the mere fact of not adopting the goodwill alternative, you would have, in essence, elected the fact that you wanted to continue Statement 142 or the accounting where it's an impairment-only approach. The issue that this all results from is actually Topic 250, and I think that this was raised by Kristi Elusey when she talked about preferability a little earlier. But this isn't a foreign concept. I think many of you have probably dealt with, let's say, inventory when you change from FIFO to LIFO or vice versa. Usually, or when there's two acceptable approaches in GAAP and you switch from one to another, Topic 250 requires you to assess preferability. And all that's saying is, is you have to prove why changing from one alternative to another is preferable for financial reporting in your particular situation. And there's fairly limited guidance. And when you actually do that, you have to do it on a full retrospective basis. So, for example, the goodwill standard was, the original effective date was in 2015. Let's say you had goodwill on your books and you did not elect a PCC alternative for some, you know, for whatever reason. Five years down the road, you think that it's a better approach and you decide to elect the alternative. Well, you're going to have to assess preferability. And the original transition provisions where you could amortize goodwill on a prospective basis, that's no longer available for you because you did it subsequent to the effective date window, and Topic 250 would require a full retrospective adoption. The issuance of 2016-03 allows you, basically, remove the effective dates. So basically, the first time that you elect the alternative is your effective date. And you don't have to assess preferability at that point in time. And you're also, you know, made available the transition provisions that are originally intended in the original ASU. So that's 2016-03. And with that, I think we're going to jump into our first polling question.
Right. So what we would like to know from you is, does 2016-03 appropriately address your concerns related to transition and preferability with PCC-related ASUs? So everybody pull out their phones and let's see what you think. Looks like that has accomplished our objective. So with about 71, 72, kind of flipping, saying yes, that's, that's a good thing. So yay, PCC. Okay?
Okay.
Next.
And again, you know, if any of the panelists ever want to weigh in, just interrupt me. And actually, anyone in the floor, too. Again, Candy mentioned that this is a very interactive session. Feel free. I mean, you're not going to offend me. It's actually better, you know? And this is actually, the next issue is exactly why I had the disclaimer, because VIE guidance, if you ever looked at Topic 810, it's just one of those areas that if you read the codification, you're not even sure if you're reading English. So it's usually easier to explain things in my own terms. And I'm actually going to probably go through this topic a little faster than you'd like. But, you know, my caveat is, is that if you are interested in learning about VIE guidance, that's actually going to be the focus of my in-depth session. Trying to, I will try to give you a plain English understanding of VIE guidance and also provide you the reasons why we're struggling with this issue, or why the PCC and the FASB is struggling with this issue. So, you know, the issue is focused on applying VIE guidance to leasing arrangements under common control, not leasing arrangements, to entities under common control. And it does not apply to leasing arrangements under common control because that's already, that has already been addressed. So this is everything other than your typical operating company and real estate company. It's, it's everything else, right? So the concerns that we've heard when you're assessing VIE guidance, at least the stakeholder feedback, is that there's widespread diversity in applying GAAP and that it is very fragmented and difficult to understand. And if you look at, you know, Section 55 of Topic 810, when it applies to VIE guidance, there's very few examples that would relate to your typical private company situation. Most of them relate to securitized structuring entities or, you know, mortgage-backed security examples of when you would consolidate. So I think private company constituents struggle to just find some regular guidance that they can relate to, to their situation. Just as a brief recap, these are the broad steps that you would find in VIE guidance. First one is, you know, are you looking at a legal entity? This doesn't apply to an asset. You have to assess whether the entity is an LOC or corporation. It has to be some type of legal structure that you're applying to this to. And you'd also have to determine if you qualify for any scope exceptions. You know, I talked about one already, which is the scope exception for leasing arrangements under common control. That's one. Another could be the fact that you're dealing with an NFP entity. Next step is, you have to assess, now that you found this legal entity and you're determining whether you would want to consolidate, you'd have to assess whether you have a variable interest in that entity. And, you know, the way I describe it is, is do you have an instrument that absorbs risk and reward created by the entity? And, you know, the most common one that I can think of is common stock. Stock does well, you're absorbing the gains, right? If the stock does poorly, the value of the stock goes down. That is a variable instrument. That could rope you in. Then the next step is, okay, I have a variable interest in an entity. Now I have to determine whether it's a variable interest entity or a VIE. And the way I'd describe that is, go back to 1970, or 1950s, sorry, because that's when ARB 51 was issued. And, you know, picture your typical traditional capital structure for debt and equity. And equity should behave the way that you'd expect it to, meaning if you're going to invest in a company and you think you're the owner, you should have sufficient capital to finance the activities. The equity holders as a group should have the ability to make the decisions. And if there's any gain, there should be the ones that absorb residual return. And if there's loss, they should be the first people to absorb that loss. And the vote should probably be proportionate. If you violate either one of those criteria, then you probably have something called a VIE. So if you trip that up, the next step is actually fairly, I think, intuitive, even though we have special terms for that. And that's the primary beneficiary test, and sometimes you need to apply the related party tiebreaker. But what you're trying to do there is establish or identify who has controlling financial interests. And the way we define that in Topic 810 is the people, or the entity or the person that has power and economic exposure over the entity. If you meet both of those criteria, then you are a, the primary beneficiary, or you have controlling financial interest and you would consolidate. That sounds great. In the next two slides, I'm not really going to go through. It's just in case anyone comes up and wants to discuss the related tiebreaker in, in detail. What I'm going to jump to is an example that, that, you know, the staff, the PCC, and the board has been wrestling with, and a lot of people have told us that they struggled with. Initially, when I prepared this example, it was one out of maybe eight, and I thought that this was the slam dunk example of when you would consolidate. So that's my own personal view, right? I put it up and we couldn't even get through this first example. And I think that, you know, while you might not deal with a CarCo or an EngineCo, I think, you know, use it on an intuitive basis, but I think the economic arrangements are probably similar to what you would deal with outside of leasing arrangements. And here you see some owner up top that owns two, there could be more entities, we're focusing on the two here, which is a car company, and it makes cars. And the management of CarCo thought it'd be a good idea to come up and fabricate or make engines and design them on their own, save costs, and make engines that better suit what they need to do. So they, they decided to create EngineCo. And EngineCo was funded by basically, 15% of the funding came from an intercompany loan from CarCo, and then 5% came from the owner, and, you know, they, they also got financing from the, from a bank or third-party financing. But the issue here is, is that 90% of the finance, or the engines that are produced from EngineCo are being designed and sold right to CarCo. And there's this $15,000 intercompany loan or sibling loan, right, to EngineCo. And the issue that arises is, when I'm looking at CarCo and trying to prepare GAAP financial statements, do I have to consolidate, or does CarCo have to consolidate EngineCo? And you could mess around with a fact pattern, change the percentages or whatnot, but the question still arises, and the difficulty is, is does CarCo consolidate? Some say yes, and some would always say no because they, some believe that owner is always the primary beneficiary. So, you know, just a status update on this issue. The PCC definitely recognizes this as a, a big issue along with the FASB. While they're working through this issue and through the issuance of 1502, which is basically the standard that most recently modified Statement 167, related, other related-party issues creeped up or crept up related to funds and public entities. And I think the PCC, in their most, or not the most recent, but in their April PCC meeting, decided to, or recommended that the board address this holistically for public and private companies. So with that, I think we're going to jump into some-
Phil, I'd like to see if anybody on the panel has some comments before we move on. Jeff?
As Candy mentioned during the introductions, I'm in the middle of my fourth year of being on the PCC and will tentatively be on for another 17 months. During this time, I've heard Mike make the presentations on VIE guidance many, many times over the last four years. And I'm not sure whether I have more of an understanding or I am more confused. And that's not a reflection of Mike, but it's a reflection on, on the literature. And I've, I've got two pledges to myself. One is that over the next 17 months, that I'm going to learn everything that I can about VIE guidance. Thereafter, shortly thereafter, I'm going to be retiring, and I've got a pledge to myself that I'm going to forget about.
So on the, on the VIE guidance, and we have added a project to the board's agenda to look at, this is a, as I said in my prepared remarks, a balancing act. It's, it's beyond this. It is trying to make it more easier to navigate through the codification. And the theory is, if we were to just reorganize existing paragraphs, maybe that makes it easier. But the fundamental problem is not just reorganizing paragraphs, it's actually trying to write a change in words that is more logical. The difficulty in doing that is what we have found in the history of the board is that when we try to rewrite words, we end up with changes in outcomes. And so right now, there is a balancing act. And anyone who has read the definition of expected losses and then reread it and reread it and reread it, and then tried to ponder, goes, is this circular, you're right. But if we start to change the words, we have to be very careful about changing the outcomes. But, but we're trying to do that so that it can be better understood. And that's, that's something that's, that's not on the prepared remarks today, but it is something that we've assigned resources to. And the board has initially got the, the staff's proposal on how to start changing words and how to start changing the navigation of it. But we are very concerned if we change words, we change outcomes, and we might not actually make it easier.
And one thing I'd add to the, a question that we frequently get is, why do you even need all this guidance? Can't you just blow it all up? Well, you know, I'd point out, it's a little subtlety in Mike's comments, that a lot of structures have been created over the years since ARB 51 came to us in the 50s that took risk from the equity holders and shifted it to someone else. The most poignant example of that is if I've got an entity, George has an entity, we both own 100% of the equity of the entity, but for whatever reason, there's a management contract where George is going to shift to me 100% of the profits and losses. None of you would sit here and say that I shouldn't consolidate George's entity, even though I own none of the entity's equity. So that's an extreme example, but it gives rise to the reason why this is necessary, and you can't just take a red line through the whole thing.
But Jeff, after you retire, we're going to keep calling you once you learn VIE.
I would like to say, there's a, one of the questions, because I'm looking at the questions, is the VIE topic is not salvageable. And the board needs to develop a simplified, unified model for consolidation written understandably. Would you consider this? And I, I think it's not salvageable is one of the things that I think I've sort of come to the realization that it wasn't written with family companies or some of the tax planning, some of the private company issues. That's not why VIE guidance was written, and that's sort of the unintended consequence. However, that being said, I don't believe that there is a conceptual basis that almost anybody would agree with, or that we could get through, that just completely exempts entities under common control from VIE guidance. But there's got to be some middle ground in there, and under what circumstances? What would be the alternative if you did exclude some, or you made it a little different? You don't want the disclosures to be much different. So it's, would the board consider rewriting it in an understandable way? I think that's a, it's very difficult to do, and, but I do believe that there's a lot of appetite. This is probably the number one thing that I know the PCC and I'm sure that FASB supports trying to make it a little bit simpler.
And what-
This is where the degrees of simplification is what you get into, because it's not just an either-or question. This is the same sort of basic thing that we run into with liabilities versus equity. Everybody says, you know, the guidance is impenetrable. You can't understand it. It's poorly organized, poorly written, et cetera. Ultimately, as Russ said, when you start reorganizing things and you have to change some words to make the thing read better, it's inevitably going to change some outcomes. What I think, you know, sort of we all have to get comfortable with is, you got to choose simplification as the principle. And you got to live with some outcomes that you might not like, because otherwise, we're just going to keep going around in a circle. If, if we all like the outcomes we have now, then we probably don't need to touch the guidance in many cases, because it's, it's very difficult to do much to any areas of GAAP without, you know, some change happening.
To put it another way, you can't write to a specific result. It's very difficult to accomplish that and not change financial reporting outcomes.
And also, just to remind everyone that, you know, under the decision-making framework, we are to consider cost and complexity, but focus on user relevance. And the users are telling us, you know, that, that in a lot of instances, consolidation in VIE guidance is, is relevant. So we have to make sure that we consider that as well. So it is, as Russ said, a balancing act. So, anyone else have any comments before we go to the first polling question? Okay, let's go to the first polling question. So, we would like to know, is this a common issue that private companies deal with? So in your client base, or if you are actually a preparer or a user, is this something that you run across in the private company setting?
Yeah, it's probably a softball question. But, you know, I also wanted to, I think, stress, there's a option uncertain. You know, if this is something that you don't deal with, either probably don't provide an answer or definitely put uncertain, you know, if this is not an issue that you're familiar with, or actually with any of these polling questions.
Okay. So I think 92% of the respondents, yes, this is something that, that they deal with. Okay, next. The next polling question that we have is, do you agree that there is diversity in practice in applying the VIE guidance to common control scenarios? So 85% of you think that there is diversity in practice, and I would agree with that. Okay? The next polling question that we have is, as Mike was going through the CarCo/EngineCo example, is would you have concerns if amendments were made so that CarCo is not the primary beneficiary of EngineCo? So in other words, they would not be consolidating?
And that's the problem.
Right.
I was going to say, thus the balancing act.
Right. And we're like that on the PCC group, on the board. This is a very complex issue. So you can see the difficulty that we're going to have trying to write something that we're all happy.
Yeah, Candy, I think that's very unlike the leasing arrangement scenario where most would agree that that, or many would agree that that is not, shouldn't be consolidated.
Right. So, interesting. Okay. And then I think the last question is, if CarCo is not consolidating EngineCo, do you think that there should be disclosures required in that particular circumstance? So I think we're in agreement that there should be some information disclosed about EngineCo if CarCo does not consolidate. And then the, the next question obviously would be, what would that be? But, so I think everyone understands that there definitely is value in providing some information about the arrangement and about, and about EngineCo.
Just as a public service announcement, for those that used 1407 for common control leasing arrangements, there are additional disclosures that are required if you avail yourself of that. And we found, and looking at some peer-reviewed comments, that those weren't always being disclosed.
And so then our last polling question on this topic before we move on is, should an election of combining an entity under common control bypass any consolidation assessment? So in other words, if you choose to combine, then you don't have to go through the guidance to, to figure out whether or not you should consolidate.
And a reminder, please answer uncertain if you don't really have a good sense on this one.
And it's the staff's understanding, or at least my personal understanding, is you cannot jump to combination. You have to run through Topic 810 before you can, and if nothing in Topic 810 compels or requires you to consolidate, then you can elect combination. That's at least our understanding.
Right. And the difference between combination and consolidation, there are some nuances in non-controlling interest, et cetera, but they're non-substantive for the most part.
So about half of us who have responded believe that, well, we just dropped below half. 48% believe that, you know, if you combined, then you would, it would be okay to bypass the consolidation question, consolidation guidance. So that's interesting.
So Candy, when I look at all of these polling results, here's what I learned. Polling question two, polling question three tells me it's a common transaction, there's diversity. It tells me there's a problem. Polling question four tells me we don't have a broad solution. So I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but I was wondering if I could get two volunteers to come to the mic and we could maybe engage in a debate. So one that voted yes and one that voted no. And I, I promise we won't yell at you, yes or no. But, but what I'm trying to determine is, is there a, is there a, is there a bridge? Is there a path forward between one-third of you yes, one-third of you no? And let's just say those that are uncertain, once you have an opportunity to be fully educated, you probably are going to, half of you are going to go to the yes camp, half of you are going to no camp. So I'm assuming that we'd be split. But, but is there, is there a basis for yes? Is there a basis for no? And if the answer's no, is there a common ground on the disclosures? Because there was a wide majority that said if you don't consolidate, you want disclosures. But I wonder if you all want the same disclosures, because I would think if you voted yes and you lost that vote, I've seen this at the board table all the time. One board member loses, so you go, how about disclosures? And then the disclosures they want is the same as if you consolidate. I was just wondering, which honestly, chair in the meeting does not help move it forward. But I was just wondering if, if we could maybe get a couple of yeses and a couple of nos, and I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, I just, it would, it would help us try to figure out how to move the, the solution forward.
And if you're comfortable in your seat, I can volunteer. I think those mics are wireless, so I can take it and run it right to you.
I mean, one-
Make it more convenient.
You know, just to kind of prompt you a little bit, I, I think what we have heard is some people prefer or would lean towards consolidation because of the vertical integration as opposed to a simple leasing arrangement, which we did with the other PCC alternative. So, but, you know, the question becomes, how much vertical integration is enough?
And so I'll take the no side, although I don't know if I actually agree with it. Go ahead. Yeah.
Michael will take the mic, all right.
Get some good exercise.
Yeah, that's good, Mike.
I think it's on.
I voted no. And the biggest thing we struggle with, I think, is that trying to make a decision between whether the car company or the owner controls the engine company, they're the same person. So it doesn't seem like a very practical exercise. GAAP has, for a long time, had a theme, I think, that related-party transactions are inherently non-arms-length, and therefore, generally speaking, the best approach is to disclose them fully so that a user can make their own decision about the economics. And I think that perhaps the middle ground would be, and I think this is true today with, with other elements of GAAP, if a related-party transaction is designed such that the resulting impact on the financial statements is misleading, does not depict in any way the truth, there's sort of a form-over-substance situation, then you do have to consider the substance. And I think an example that we have today, although I guess it's changing, is related-party leases that previous, prior to the new rule that'll be in effect in a couple- Prior to the new rule that'll be in effect in a couple of years, the rule has been in FAS 13, that if the related party, if the relationship between the parties affected the lease terms, then you ought to think about whether the lease terms in substance are something different. So that's why I voted no. In this case, it's a $15,000 loan. I'm presuming that's not an overwhelmingly material situation for the car company. And it didn't seem to me, on the facts given, that not consolidating would be so misleading to users, provided that the relationship is fully disclosed, and perhaps some information about engine company would need to be disclosed as well.
And then, I was a yes. And the reason I'm a yes is that a lot of times I have micro-sized clients, and the bank is the primary user of their financial statements and really dictating what they want to see. And a lot of times it's based on what they have collateral for and not collateral. And a lot of times the banks want to see these two or these three entities because that's what they have collateral for, and they're just saying, we need these consolidated no matter what you have to do to get them combined or consolidated. And going through the VIE guidance to try to find a way to consolidate sometimes for the bank or put together the combining financial statements becomes a pretty arduous task. If the client and the bank, the user, wants consolidated in that case, being able to just elect to combine and then move on and not have to apply the extra onerous guidance, I don't see the concern for the client, because the client wants it, the user wants it, and we're having this whole problem of who's the primary beneficiary when we have a bunch of sister companies.
So I'll tell you where I am. I'm uncertain. And here's why I'm uncertain. First of all, thank you for willingness to come up and share your reasons. The reason I'm uncertain is I don't think we have done a good job in the past of answering the, in essence, the unit of account question in the reporting unit. And so the difference between the two, the common thing, the difference between the no and the yes was, which set of financial statements are you're focusing on, right? So you said the owner is really the finance, so the owner would consolidate, and so now you're looking at standalone statements, that's why you don't consolidate. And the other one says, well, no, the bank is lending based on the totality of the assets. And it really gets to, and we do not have this question answered at the conceptual level, about how to deal with the unit of account. In other words, what do you combine? What do you link? And that's why these questions are so difficult. That said, we do need to figure that out, and we do need to answer the question. But again, thank you for your willingness to come up. I don't think there's a right answer or a wrong answer.
To your point about lenders, you know, oftentimes wanting those to be consolidated, you know, I think we probably also see a lot of lenders that want them broken apart, you know? So it's really hard to generalize what lenders would want in that case. And also, with regard to, you know, who's really in control here? Is it Carco or is it owner? You know, does it matter to you? You know, if all you're focusing on is the fact that owner could trump any, sorry for that use of that word, but could override any decision that owners, that the management of Carco made, is that enough for you? Or does there have to have been evidence that at some point in the past they have done so or have regularly done so? You know, these are the details of trying to write a standard around this that just causes us to spin around in a circle.
The other thing to make this even more fun that Darryl and I like to talk about is, how come nobody ever thinks maybe the engine company should consolidate the car company? You can't have a car without the engine. And what everyone talks about when they get a car is, did they get a V8, a V6, and how many liters and all that? So you're just like, and that's usually when you go on to the next project.
Okay. In the spirit of going on, to the next project.
Yeah, so I have to give the same disclaimer that Mike did. I won't use some of his own colloquialisms, but maybe a few of my own. As Candy mentioned before, one of the very key roles of the PCC is to advise the FASB on its own ongoing projects. And that's what we're going to be talking about, some select projects on which the PCC has been advising the FASB. Those are listed on this slide. Starting off with, the project that I'd like to say is probably the poster child for a non-simple simplification project. This is one that we've been working on pretty soon after we started the simplification initiative and we're still working on it, and we still yet haven't put out an exposure draft. This is an area where there is, let me just move forward, this is the simplification of balance sheet classification of debt. I mean, this is an area where there is a patchwork of rules that have grown up over the years within GAAP. There's a fair amount of inconsistency within those rules. Some rely heavily on management judgment or intent. Others are more focused on what's actually in place contractually. There is certainly some inconsistency that folks have pointed out over the years between how some of these, and I'll say, type-two subsequent events are handled, being reflected on the balance sheet as of the balance sheet date, in contrast to many other types of type-two subsequent events. And my own personal favorite among this patchwork of rules, it has to do with revolving credit arrangements and whether your lockbox is a springing lockbox or not. This project is one where we were about to put out an exposure draft, and we may still shortly, but, you know, we'll say the board has, we'll be discussing the input that we got from the PCC the other day. But the PCC first started discussing this project way back, a year or so ago, and recommended a few things to the board. The first is, with regard to subjective acceleration clauses or material adverse change clauses, which are pretty much in every debt agreement. But our outreach to lenders and so forth told us that these things typically are rarely trigger, rarely actually exercised, and when they are exercised, pretty much every other covenant has been violated by that time. So what the PCC's recommendation to the FASB was, that these should not, the mere presence of these should not prevent the classification of the debt as being non-current, but instead that they should only be, trigger that classification as current if the clauses have themselves been triggered. And this is one where the FASB accepted the recommendation that was, you know, in the exposure draft that hasn't yet gone out. The, probably the major area that the PCC advised the FASB on a year ago, and this was some really, really good discussion, had to do with the situation where you had a violation of a debt covenant and the gaining of a subsequent waiver following balance sheet date but before the financial statements were issued. The PCC's argument for saying that you have to make this an exception to the general rule that the FASB was focusing on, similar to the rule that they have internationally, and that is, you know, whether the contractual terms that are in place as of year-end, does the entity have the contractual right to defer settlement for at least a 12-month period? And that is, that in these type of situations where there is a covenant violation, there is no way you could possibly have, you know, a waiver granted before year-end. A bank would never do that. It was a catch-22 situation, that a bank is going to want to see the financial statements, which of course aren't produced until after year-end in order to decide whether or not to be able to, was going to grant a waiver. So it was sort of a catch-22 situation. There was certainly also some discussion at the PCC, by PCC members and FASB members, that maybe the way to perhaps make an exception here was to say that this was a type, a sort of a type-one subsequent event, that this is the resolution of an uncertainty that exists as of the balance sheet data as to whether or not a bank would actually be calling this debt or not. Again, that was the argument that was made by some, certainly not by all. And so the FASB, listen to this, and the issues about this being a catch-20 situation, which would cause massive disruption in the system. There are actually situations out there where contractors can't get, you know, construction jobs because, on state license jobs because of licensing regulations that have current ratios and things like that as part of their, you know, their qualifications. Anyway, the FASB did make this exception to that general rule about focusing on what contractually is in place as of year-end. And again, that was in the exposure draft that hasn't yet gone out. When the PCC discussed the other major example of, you know, where these rules touch upon a year ago, and that has to do refinances of indebtedness before, you know, the financial statements are issued, the PCC at that time was split pretty much 5-5 as to whether or not that should be an exception or not. Because frankly, if you don't make, if you make that an exception too, then you wonder to what extent should we even be going forward with this project? How much simplification would we really be doing? And again, that's where it stood, and that's where we're about to put out this exposure draft. But we had a very interesting discussion the other day at the PCC, and there has been turnover of PCC members, four of them, since the PCC voted on this, indicated its leanings a year ago. And so when the PCC voted on this the other day, they had shifted their leanings quite a bit, so that the majority of the PCC members now are favoring, recommending to the FASB to make the same exception that we make for, proposing to make, for waivers, defaults and waivers, for refinances that are, again, in place before the date the financial statements are issued. That's not to say that those leanings were unanimous, that's not to say that even those who voted for that leaning voted so unconditionally. And interestingly enough, on the panel here, we have PCC members who represent the gamut of those opinions, and maybe I thought I'd turn it over to Jeff and George and Candy and Tom, maybe to add a little color here.
I guess with respect to the debt classification and the waivers, if we roll back about a year ago at the NASS convention in Baltimore, I think that we stated at that time that between the boards and the PCC, there was total unanimity as to the approach. The problem was, the PCC was 10-0 on one side, and the board was unanimous 7-0 on the other side. So shortly after that, though, I think the momentum shifted, and largely as a result of the polling questions and the dialogues here at the NASS conference, and I think that the board was much more inclined, based upon the results of those surveys, to maybe provide for an exception. So I guess my first comment is that the results of these town halls, they do mean something. Russ and the rest of the board is sincere about hearing what the private company practitioners believe and what their views are, differential factors between private companies and public companies. And so your input is important. I think that that's one example, and to the extent that you can provide additional input on other matters, your voices are being heard.
George, Tom, y'all have any comments?
I mean, I'll just be incremental to Jeff and Jeff. There is a lot of complexity in this area of debt classification, and we do see a lot of inappropriately classified instruments. So I certainly appreciate the intent of the board in trying to undertake and endeavor to make this easier. Having said that, it again, kind of goes back to what we were talking about earlier, about writing to a result versus writing to a concept, and it is a struggle and a balance. And the more you write to a concept, the more you change potentially outcomes. And I don't, I sense that there is a distaste for changing outcomes in this area, and that's where we're at, in trying to figure out if there can be some exceptions in addition to ones that have already been granted.
Okay.
I was gonna add one thing. To the lady who came up and asked the question of me earlier, I guess I owe an apology. Russ told me afterwards that I gave a great answer to a question she didn't ask, so. So in your mental tape, you know, edit and take the answer I gave to her question and insert it right here.
So Darryl had mentioned what the board's next steps might or might not be here.
Right.
So let's see what you think. The next thing we have is a polling question, and it says, do you agree with the PCC recommendations for this project? And we would like to know if you agree with our most recent decision, which was on Tuesday, where we took kind of a poll of the PCC to see if refinancing should be added in as an exception, which would be current GAAP, so not changing current GAAP. So. So it looks like about 75% of the respondents would agree with our most recent decision on whether, on where we would land on the exceptions to debt classification.
I guess my question, is there any merit to asking the question in two parts?
Okay.
One would be the waivers, and then secondly, the refinancing. Because I think that the 75% may be influenced somewhat by people that are one way, in one camp, and a different way in the other.
We'd have to do that probably by show of hands, I think.
Yeah, I don't know if we can wipe out the-
But maybe we could ask those two questions and ask for show of hands, ask them separately.
However, I'll say that I may have voted differently than some others up here, and I believe, this is the reason I voted the way I did, which I voted for both of them to be exceptions, is I believe presentation of current, non-current, what have you, on the balance sheet is inherently an assumption as to when something is going to take place. And so that both of those assumptions are uncertainties, and so they could both be viewed, even though contractually it says it's due next March, even though contractually it says you violated your covenant. That assumption could be a type-one contingency, and maybe you need to revisit it, and so maybe it does warrant presentation differently when the assumption changes when you do refinance. That was just my personal thought process that not everyone agreed with.
Christine?
So, the one question that I have when we get down that path then is why refinancing would be different than a prepayment? And other situations that might occur with respect to the debt that would cause a reclassification from long-term to current, or current to long-term, depending on a variety of different things that might happen before issuance?
So I think there's all kinds of issues that we need to work through with this classification of short-term and long-term debt. I guess, you know, I would just like to see, maybe a show of hands first, is this an issue that you run into? And is this something that causes you concern in preparing financial statements on a regular basis? For those of you who think that this is something that you have to work through on a regular basis for private companies, would you raise your hands?
What is the issue? Is it all of them or just refinancing?
All, yeah, just the issue itself.
The whole thing?
Yeah, the whole thing. So raise your hands again.
It was a lot.
It was a lot? Okay, it was a lot.
Very precise.
Here's what concerns me about the project in its entirety. The intention of the board was to say, these all have some similarities, and it'd be a lot easier if you just had one model, right? And you could do the legal term, and it's relatively blunt, it's pretty easy to figure out, but then you've got some dialogue you've got to do with your client, dialogue you've got to do with investors. Or you could do, no, let's do a probable. Let's do a, is it going to be refinanced? Is it going to be waived? Is it going to be triggered? We could do the probable one. But that's difficult because you end up in having to estimate things. What worries me, the path we're on, and think about having to train and explain, is you're going to have a different model for Saks and Max than you have for covenants than you have for refinancing. And I think if we go down this path, we are where we are today. That's what worries me about, and this happens all the time, and I've voted on this a number of times in a positive, on an individual decision, then you wake up at the end and you're like, oh, that didn't work. And that's what worries me here, is we're going to have exception after exception after your exception. And you can write checklist and rules, you can get it right, but it's a lot harder to train people, it's a lot harder to get it right for the next 20 years in this. I honestly don't know what the right answer is. I just, this is what's, this is my nervousness about having three distinctly different items on what is basically the same thing, which is when can, at least the first two, when is the lender going to get their money back early?
We have a question over here? Okay.
So I believe if you have a waiver from the bank prior to the issuance of the financial statements, then you shouldn't have to reclassify that debt as current. And if you do not have that waiver, then you would reclassify as current. Simple as that.
Okay, so that's helpful. So let's go to Jeff's question on raising our, just getting a sense for- So let's go to Jeff's question on raising our, just getting a sense for, kind of digging down deeper into the polling question that we just asked. So for those of you who would agree that having a waiver after the balance sheet date, you would classify that debt as long-term, raise your hands. Okay, so I think that's a majority, I would say. All right. So for those of you to dig deeper, how about if you had a refinancing? So it's not a waiver, it's a complete refinancing of the debt after year-end, but prior to when the financial statements are issued. Who believes that that should be classified as long-term?
Much more mixed.
Does it matter who you refinance with?
Yeah.
Same lender or different, how about the lender? Does it matter? Same lender?
So who believes it has to only be same lender?
Yeah.
But the lender that sees it as long-term has already received their money, isn't using the financial statements. The other lender who was told you needed the money to pay off debt now sees the debt as long-term, but the debt they see as long-term is not their debt. You think they understand it and comprehend it?
Yes.
Okay.
So what if...
But you already paid that money out.
What if the situation is...
I know, I know.
What if the situation is, is you have clearly long-term debt that's not due for five years, but in the period between the balance sheet date and the issuance date, it gets prepaid in total? Now, is that current debt?
With a current asset. Is that...
Subsequent event.
But it's a subsequent event that doesn't require remeasurement.
So it's a subsequent event if you pay it off, but if you refi it, it's not a subsequent event?
And basically, what they're concerned about is the lack of neutrality in the financial statements.
Can you, to the point about the, can you refinance with equity and still get it long-term? Because I think, I think that Michael tells me that current GAAP requires, allows you to do that.
Yep, I believe so. I believe that's current debt.
Michael, I rely on Mike, I don't know.
Anyway, so if you have debt and you refinanced it by issuing equity, that would still qualify as a refinance and allow you to have non-current treatment on your debt.
Jeff?
To be totally transparent, the other day when the vote came out, it was now nine to one, and I was the one dissenter. And part of my reason is that I think that there's a lot of problems with the refinancing literature as it's presently written. There's some inconsistency in the application. Quite frankly, in the private company world, the existence of a financing arrangement, which is one of the two criteria, either it's refinanced or there's a financing agreement in place, there are no such things, for the most part, of financing agreement in the private company world, because the deal's not done until you go to the closing table with the bank. So if I were to go along with the refinancing, I would want to have some cleanup, if you will, of the literature as it presently exists.
Hang on a second.
The way I look at it is, why even get a waiver from the bank if you're not going to leave it a long-term? I mean, I know that's the main reason. I mean, you go to the bank to get a waiver so you can leave it a long-term.
No, you go into the banks, you don't have to pay it. But I mean, we actually agree it ought to be long-term.
Yeah, it's the refi.
The issue's not covenant. We've already, the board's already agreed that the issue is the refinance. And if you want the refinance to be long-term, then the issue needs to become is everything, debt, equity, debt to anyone, or just debt to the same lender. And because refinancing, right or wrong, is defined in GAAP as same lender. If it's a new lender, it's not a refinancing. But that's, I think the real issue is not the debt. We agree with you on the debt covenant issue, it's the refinancing.
So, and to explain a little further, I actually agree that it should be shown as non-current if it is refinanced. But the reason I did it, and the reason I don't believe if you prepay long-term, that should be shown as current, is I believe that at the balance sheet date, you've got a contractual item that's disclosed in your footnotes, that says this is due now, and you have changed it. So if it's long-term debt that you've prepaid, I can see that as really sort of a subsequent, a subsequent event that would require disclosure, but it's not something that's contractually already disclosed as being current. So it's already long-term, and it's a subsequent business decision. But if I follow that logic, then Russ's and a lot of people's concern about the same institution, a different institution, comes into play. Because it is a, you are extinguishing one debt, and that debt really was current, and you're exchanging it for brand-new debt with a subsequent transaction that is almost unrelated. It may appear to be related because it's, cash is cash, but it's unrelated in that it may be a new agreement with different terms that's subsequent to the balance sheet date. So that's why I am concerned, and I don't know how I would vote about the same institution, different institution. But I do believe if it's the same institution and it were refinanced, I believe it should be non-current.
So I'm kind of in that camp, too, where I'm concerned about the very things that George talked about and Russ did as well. One of the complexities involved there is, what if it's a consortium of banks, then? And it's a different member of the consortium, et cetera? So that isn't, like many things, as easy as it seems.
So on the same bank issue, the thing, the thing that, so I actually like the board's original conclusion on this. But if we were to go down and waive the refinancing, I'll have a difficult time eliminating the same bank, because I'm afraid that it'll cause an economic consequence. And you will actually, clients will have to pay an additional fee to stay with the same bank, and it'll, you'll be paying a fee to get an accounting result. And I just personally have a problem with that. So I'd either want to expand it or not have it. That's...
Let's go over here. Been efficiently waiting.
Yeah, I would agree. The refinancing does seem clearly a type 2 subsequent event. It seems like preparers who are having problems with that subsequent event disclosure, perhaps even with pro forma current ratio disclosure after refinancing, would resolve it. The other two, though, the subjective acceleration and the waiver, both give the lender a right to call. Whether they exercise that right is a question. And to me, that's where the model is still consistent with current GAAP, that that is a contingency, and you would have subsequent information to confirm that it's not, the lender's not exercising the right, therefore it's not a current liability.
As to the long-term treatment of a refinancing, yeah, these things generally don't just pop up out of the blue between the balance sheet date and the date of the issuance of the financial statement. Oftentimes, the company's considering whether or not to refinance, whether it's with the same lender or a different lender, well in advance of the balance sheet date, which would lend credence to it being a long-term classification. And as to, I'm sorry, the third gentleman from my right's point, sorry, George, sorry, George. Trouble with names. Comment about consortiums of banks. By and large, small and medium-sized entities are not dealing with bank consortiums, they're dealing with one lender for one debt. So that's really not a private, a big issue in the private company arena?
I guess, back to my comments with respect to some of the inconsistencies, if you will, in addressing the pronouncement as it currently is. Current GAAP says that if you have a refinancing, thou shall reclassify it according to the terms of the refinancing. A lot of people read it as being optional, and it is not optional. And I see oftentimes people not reclassifying according to the terms of the refinanced instrument. So that's another problem in current GAAP, if you will.
Okay, so we appreciate your input there, but let's go ahead and move on so that we can get some input on some other items that we are working with as well. I think the next item is hedge accounting?
Yep.
Not sure which one of you is going to tee that up.
I think Darryl kind of covered it before.
Yeah, I'm going to go pretty quick. And he had the same issue with this slide. Like, oh, the slide transition. I'm jumping right to this slide. So basically, you know, Darryl covered in great, or much more detail, the hedging project. And overall, I believe, maybe not from the disclosure perspective, but on the accounting, I mean, I think hedge accounting is greatly simplified, or at least what the tentative decisions that have been reached so far in hedge accounting. But one open question, I think, that a lot of private companies raise, or at least the stakeholders raise, is contemporaneous documentation is something that private companies struggle with. If you're familiar with hedge accounting, it's one of those things, if you don't document the day you enter in the hedge or shortly thereafter, you get kicked out of hedge accounting, even though that was your intention, right? So under the PCC alternative, under the simplified hedge accounting approach, what they provided private companies was, for those that elect that alternative, is an opportunity to basically finalize their documentation up to the date your financial statements are made available for issuance. So let's say you went into a hedge in February, you didn't get, you know, you didn't dot all your i's and cross all your t's, you ended up talking to your auditor, but you finalized everything. By the end, or before you release your financial statements, it would not kick you out of hedge accounting for cash flow hedges for those plain vanilla swaps. So the question that some private companies or stakeholders are raising is, should that similar relief be extended for all hedge, hedging relationships?
So before we move on, if there's any comments from any of the board members or panel members? Jeff?
Well, I think right now, the expectation is that the exposure draft will go out in the third quarter of this year.
Yeah.
And in fact, there is a question that is expected to be asked along these lines. So if you have observations with respect to, with respect to whether or not there should be a delayed documentation ability for these other hedges, please comment in the responses to the exposure draft.
And I think it'd be helpful for perhaps some of the board members to talk about the three-month and how three months was decided versus some other period of time.
And the other concerns, right.
It's because it's today's GAAP. So today, do you have to do the quantitative test? Do you have to document your hedge, that it's going to be a hedge interception, but you have three months to actually do your quantitative test? And so we thought we were giving relief of the actual documentation of hedge accounting. And since you have to do an initial test or initial analysis, we thought that the three months was okay, since that's what we thought people were doing today. Now, what we may have found out is, that's not actually what people are doing today, so they're not, so it's hard when you, when you don't make a change, and you assume people are following GAAP to find out that maybe they weren't doing it. But that's how we came with the three months, is because it's required today.
Candy, can I ask just a couple of questions real quickly? By show of hands, how many people have clients with hedges of any kind? Of those of you who have clients with hedges, how many of your clients expect you to do the documentation, or they don't know what the documentation is in the first place? So, and I think that is part of what I'm thinking about, when I'm trying to decide, is 90 days enough, or do we have to wait on them to come in at year-end and tell them what documentation they didn't do so they can fill it out? Because these are the guys doing it.
Right, and I guess my observation, too, is that the 90 days also, is also consistent with the public company filing cycles. Should there be some consideration for some recognition that private company file, or non-SEC registrant filing cycles are longer than that?
So let's move to the, to the next question. So the polling question is, do you believe more relief should be provided to private companies for hedge documentation? For example, extending the documentation relief that's already under the simplified hedge accounting method to all hedges? And that is to document it before the financial statements are released. That's the new simplified method. So. So it looks like about 82% believe that additional documentation relief for private companies should be considered moving forward. And if you have concerns, I would like to hear that as well, so the group can hear.
I'm surprised by those results, and here's why. Nothing to do with accounting. If we were to move to the, to the method to where you have to have the documentation prior to the issuance of financial statements, how do you that need to audit or stand ready to talk to your clients throughout the year are going to know about the transaction until you go out to the end of the year? How are you going to serve your client to help them understand at the time they entered into the arrangement, if they needed an adjustment because they didn't do it right? If they're not going to call you till perhaps 15 to 18 months after they entered into the transaction? So I'm just, I'm just a little surprised that you'd actually want a mechanism to where it could be 14 to 18 months after the client entered the transaction, if you are the ones that the client is looking for to do the, to do the documentation, that you'd want to come in and figure out how to backfill that documentation 14, 18 months later?
Oh, good. Danielle?
They don't realize the option exists sometimes, and that there is a contemporaneous documentation requirement. So a lot of smaller clients have no idea what they're doing until the auditors come in and say, oh, by the way, did you know about all this? And then once we start telling them what the rules are, they realize, oops, well, I missed the window. That's the issue, is that they just don't even know that the options exist.
Let me ask you as a follow-up, is that for interest rate swaps, where they may be required to do it by the lender? Or is it for other types of derivatives? Because this is 1403, the simplified hedge approach that Mike mentioned, that's not changing.
Right.
Just so that we're clear.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, my size clients, we don't see it a lot, very often. But I would say it applies across the board for smaller entities that just have no idea what they're getting themselves into.
Maybe a better polling question for the benefit of the group would be, how many, by show of hands, have clients that are into non-interest rate swap derivatives for which they want to get hedge accounting?
And don't know why they're doing it? Because that's kind of what you say.
They'll have a logic for doing it, but they don't understand the accounting related to it. So they'll have an operational reason for doing it.
Okay.
But they have no idea that it impacts accounting, because they don't have an accounting team on site.
Okay, okay.
So on their internal reporting, let's say they don't do external interim financials, but their internal reporting, they're not accounting for these transactions, until you guys show up at the end, and then you tell them they got to do it.
I think the reason for pre-documentation is not well-understood.
I'd like to say that, honestly, this is, the amount of effort that's spent on documentation, and it's actually required optionality, almost. This is a place where I get to choose how I'd like to record something, based on what I tell you the documentation is, regardless of my intent. And I don't believe the same transaction entered into twice, you should be able to choose the accounting treatment, based on whether I check a box or don't, just based on what I'd like to do. I believe it should be done the same way. However, and the more I talk, the fewer of you are going to agree with me, but it happens. I understand.
It happens a lot.
But at any rate, I do believe that any time in accounting standards, we start addressing evidence. I believe evidence is an audit standard issue, and management's intent should be important. It's up to auditors to figure it out. And what is evidence, does it, in my opinion, always belong in accounting standards? That's something should be left to Chuck and his group.
And to answer the question, and I'll say that isn't necessarily my own view, but it is shared by others, or expressed by others, that there'd be a concern, absent some type of documentation requirement, that you'd buy some type of hedge, or derivative on, say, inventory for gold or whatever, and you would have then a free call option on whether or not it hits net income or other comprehensive income, absent some type of contemporaneous documentation requirement.
I guess.
That was the point of Russ's comment earlier, was, you know, if you, they don't have to declare what they're doing until you show up, then how do you get comfortable that they accounted for it like their intent was on the front end, even though they didn't document it?
Which is a valid observation.
You know, as Danielle said, they don't account for it all until the very end. And I guess, from my perspective, I would like to see an alternative, that if a company submits financial statements, GAAP financial statements on a quarterly basis, they should be treated just like a public company. Because they, in fact, are putting out the financial statements and making those decisions. So the quarterly would also... So, the quarterly would also extend to those private companies who happen to submit quarterly financial statements. And a couple of reasons for that is, typically, if a private company issues quarterly financial statements, there's a reason. It may be the terms of their credit agreement, they may be a subsidiary of a public company, they may be preparing to go public, and consequently, they probably, my experience, is that they have more qualified personnel that keep up with the GAAP requirements, and have the capabilities to prepare GAAP financial statements on a quarterly basis.
However, for debt compliance, it's typically just an officer's certificate, and an officer's certificate says, "I really don't know what these things say, I just put them together." And this whole issue, and you're clearly independent, you're not independent anyway, but this whole issue, again, of documentation, somebody else brought it up, I would be remiss if I didn't mention. And so, it gets to go in other comprehensive income, which has no conceptual basis whatsoever? Oh, my goodness. I don't know.
I don't know how to ask this. Go ahead.
I just want to add something that I don't think has been part of this discussion with private companies, but it's not uncommon that the reason that they don't consult with you in advance, or when they do the deal, is because of the notion that these agreements that house derivatives do not say on the front of the agreement in big red letters, "I am a derivative." And so, the client, controller, or whoever, owner, is aware that they entered into these swaps for the economic benefits, but the term derivative is not normally part of their lexicon. And so, when the auditors come out, even if you've been in touch with them all year, then you find out, oh, you're looking through some agreements, oh, I have a derivative here. So, that is another, I guess it just muddies the water further, but I wanted to be responsive, particularly to Russ's comment, which I agree with, about this lengthy time. But well-meaning clients, and I'm sure many of you in the room have had this situation, they don't know that they've entered into a financial instrument that, for accounting purposes, represents a derivative.
So, I was going to, I'm not sure exactly how to ask this question, but when a question was raised about who does the documentation, it looked like a lot of you raised your hands. And if what I've been told is correct, that what we were doing was giving relief from existing GAAP, and you still had three months, you had to document it at inception, and you had three months to do the testing, is that what actually occurs in practice? Or do you, in essence, today, go to prior to the issuance of the financial statements and do the documentation, do the testing at that date? In other words, are you saying that you need a change because that's what practice has done? Or are you saying you need a change so there can be more hedging recorded? And I don't know.
I'm going to hazard a guess, it's both.
It's both?
Well, I'd throw a third alternative in, and that's, you've identified that the documentation isn't done, they're running it through OCI, and you have a proposed journal entry to move it up to net income, and what happens at that point is an auditor matter.
In our practice, we have seen hedge instruments that are found to be perfectly effective after the fact, the client intended it to be a hedge. However, because there was no quantitative documentation beforehand, the accounting treatment was not granted.
Yeah. And that was, what you just said was, most of the intent behind 1403 with the interest rate swaps. Now, when it gets into other types of derivatives, it gets really muddy very quickly.
Right. Okay. This was very, very good input. I do want to get to at least one other topic before we open it up to the floor. So, we'll move on to the next topic.
Yeah, sure. That's fine. So, I'm going to focus within the disclosure framework project on one piece of it, the piece that's probably engendered the most discussion, and that is the proposal that we put out, I guess, last year on materiality. Yeah, thanks, Mike. Let's move the slides a little bit here.
Slides won't, oh.
All right. So, this is part of the, one of two prongs of this project. One prong being the entity's decision process, helping you all in the field to be able to promote, to exercise more discretion, to promote more effective and perhaps less voluminous disclosure. And the other piece is the board's decision process, an amendment to our conceptual framework, to try to help better inform us as to when disclosures are appropriate and not appropriate in the standards themselves. So, this proposal was really in that first prong, the entity's decision process. And we tried to attack this in our proposal in two ways. The first way was to propose to put within each of the disclosure sections of the codification some changes in the wording, to get away from wording such as, at a minimum, disclose this, to wording more along the lines of disclose to the extent material. Okay? So, again, trying to get away from folks automatically putting things on checklist and looking for disclosures, just because we had wording that might imply that, even when it's not really material or anything like that. The second piece of that was to put guidance on applying materiality itself in our Topic 235, and that's the codification topic on disclosures. And so, that's what's on this slide. We had several pieces of that. We proposed, or clarified, whatever, that you can't simply carve up disclosures into a million different small pieces, and say that each piece is immaterial, and therefore say that you don't need to disclose anything, that you do need to apply, you know, this concept of materiality individually and in the aggregate. And that's not an uncommon, or not an unknown concept, certainly for those of you who work with SEC registrants. We also, and I think Russ would say, we kind of got cute here a little bit, we didn't put in a definition of materiality into our proposal, but instead noted that was a legal concept, consistent with the Supreme Court's definition, which I won't get into here, and other case law. The hope there was that, or the thought there was that, we didn't want to have to update it every time, you know, things changed legally. But, as you'll hear in a minute, we did get some backlash on that. We did clarify that you can, that not only quantitative disclosures are subject to assessment for materiality, but you can also assess disclosures that are qualitative in nature for materiality. If you look at the Supreme Court's definition, it definitely would promote that. And then, we also clarified, or were more blunt on this, that the omission of a disclosure because of materiality considerations and so forth is not an accounting error. So, we received all sorts of feedback on this. But I'd say that the, well, the most, I guess, significant feedback is captured on, areas of feedback is captured on this slide. And the area of, in our, trying to be a little cute about trying to make reference to this being a legal notion, and in the hope of this making, allowing this to be evergreen, what we had was feedback that, is this, does this mean that we have, that only lawyers can make judgments, attorneys can make judgments about what's material? Do we have to subvert the judgments of auditors to attorneys, and so on? And that certainly wasn't the original intention. And, in fact, I think where we're heading there is actually putting in a definition that's consistent with what's in the auditing standards, as well as what's in the SEC's standards. As for omission is not an error, we thought that that was a pretty plain vanilla-ish thing to be putting in there. We did get some concern, not from a lot of stakeholders, but from some stakeholders, that might hinder communication with audit committees and so forth, some of the things that might have previously been reported out to audit committees, maybe they wouldn't be reported out, maybe that's not a good thing. Burden of proof, that was an interesting one. I said a little while ago that we would change the wording to, in each of the codification disclosure sections, to apply to the extent material. Folks interpret that as being very different than the old standard language of, you need not apply this standard to things that are immaterial. It wasn't our change, our intention to change any practice there, any notions there. And, again, we can certainly clarify that. But I think where, and maybe Russ and Darrell and all can add a little more color here, I think where we really got particularly a lot of pushback was from investors and other users of financial statements, the concern that, because of some subtleties in the wording, that we were perhaps promoting the taking away of useful disclosures. And so, that we are going to have a series of roundtables in November, to try to get users and others around the table to kind of explore some of that in more depth. And as I said, maybe I'll turn it over to Russ or Darrell, if they want to add any color here.
I would just add briefly that it was surprising to us that we got some of that backlash from some investors, you know, putting out the thought that we were somehow trying to take away useful information for users of financial statements. Because what we were trying to do was better clarify, you know, what's material and what's not, and helping people understand that they have the freedom not to include things that are immaterial, which we thought the clarity would help. We also thought that it would be beneficial, actually, for users of financial statements, to not have the clutter, if you will, of immaterial stuff, sort of, you know, overshadowing the really important stuff. So, that was a little bit surprising to us.
Okay. I guess we're ready for the polling question.
Yeah. So, let's go to the polling question. So, our question that we would like your input on is, do you think the proposed ASG on materiality will assist private companies in screening out immaterial disclosures, just as Darrell described? So, not a majority. About 44% think it will help, and the next largest bucket is uncertain. So, I guess it is kind of the devil's in the details, maybe. Depends on, I guess, what you're looking at.
Could we benefit from any color here, from anybody in the audience, as to what we could do, beyond what we've said we're perhaps going to do?
Is it because we confuse you, or because those that are no or uncertain don't think it's necessary for us to actually do it? Because you're already doing this concept.
I voted no because of the, referring to the legal definition. I can't remember if it's the Supreme Court, or the SEC, that has an element of it, that it doesn't reduce the total mix of information available to investors, which sort of presumes that the current mix is the bar that should not be lowered. And sort of back to Darrell's point, that at our firm, we're encouraging clients to eliminate immaterial disclosure from their financial statements. And what happens as a result, in our experience, is the more material stuff becomes more prominent, because that's what's left. So, I would rather see FASB adopt a principles-based focus on what is important to users of financial statements, rather than piggybacking off the legal definition.
So, just to be clear, one of the things that we've thought about is, instead of just referring to it as a legal notion, we could actually specifically include the Supreme Court wording in a definition. And some people thought that that would help clarity, because then you wouldn't have to feel like you were having to refer to the attorneys. But I don't think that would help in what you're describing, because you're troubled by those words, whether they're specifically stated, or just referred to. Either way.
Correct. Yeah, it's really both issues, the notion of piggybacking, which means it could change in the future, and also those specific words about the total mix.
Okay.
When we perform an audit engagement, we have to attach to the representation letter that the client gives us on their letterhead, the past journal entries. And it is the client, ultimately, that has to make the decision about whether or not the entries that have been passed are material or not. So, I think it would be helpful, since they are not familiar, the client management is not familiar with the auditing standards and not bound by them, that there be a definition of materiality in the accounting standards, since they're also representing to us that the financial statements are in accordance with GAAP. So, I think having a definition in GAAP is appropriate, and that it be as clear as possible. So, they shouldn't have to consult an attorney, or, you know, an attorney, or the law, but rather, there should be an accounting definition of what an accountant believes is material.
Do you think it should be the same as what's in the auditing literature, or different?
I think the auditing literature is pretty good, in terms of what would influence a user's decisions.
Hmm. That's what we were intending to do, but we did a really bad job of doing that.
Okay. Well, we have six minutes left, and I think this has been really, really good discussion. But we do want to leave, you know, a little bit of time, although it's not much, but we do want to have some time for anything that you want to talk about that we haven't discussed today. So, any emerging issues that we need to consider, or be aware of, as a group. And I don't know if we have questions from the online participants? That might be helpful there, too?
Yeah, no, we definitely do. There's a lot, so, there's a lot that relate to VIEs. And, again, we have an in-depth session, and I'm dedicating most of the time on my discussion on that. But I guess there's some on, I'm going to have to raise it, because it's probably the most voted. Will you look at the new lease standard to see if you can scope out private companies? It's the highest rated, so I have to raise it.
There is a question on any further work to be done on equity compensation accounting?
So, good question. One of the things we are doing, that the board has cleared for, or is in the process of clearing for issuance of exposure draft, is to align the accounting for non-employee stock-based compensation to that of employee stock-based compensation. As I said earlier, we made a number of simplifications on employee stock-based compensation, and there are three or four differences for private companies, because we recognize that stock-based compensation for private companies is different, and utilized differently between public and private. So, some of the improvements are both, some of the improvements are just for private. But that's, right now, is all that's on our radar regarding employee or non-employees.com. I really think a non-employee will be, you won't have to have a debate about if someone's an employer, non-employer, or have to re-measure non-employee awards. Those of you that have dealt with it, you have to oftentimes re-measure it until vesting date.
And there are slides, we didn't get to it today, but there are slides later in the deck that deal with the project on non-employee stock-based compensation.
Is the only idea about a PCC alternative leases, or are there any other ideas that people have put in the queue?
In the questions?
Just curious.
Mike, anything else?
There's another question about, would the PCC consider exempting any sectors from the new revenue recognition standard?
Similar to the leases.
Yeah. And I guess I, you know, I'll start with that. I mean, we have a decision-making framework, and recognition and measurement differences are part of that, but as has been discussed, there is a high hurdle, and it does need to be based on differences in user relevance. With respect to the lease standard, we were actively involved in that deliberation, and there was a letter that was issued a couple of years ago, that addressed the lease standard to the board. That letter had some observations on the lease standard that the board considered, but one of the things that the group was unanimous about was that we didn't see a basis for a difference between public companies and private companies at the time. The RevREx standard has not been addressed by the PCC.
I would add, though, that on the disclosure side, there's, you know, a lot of the disclosures for RevREx are optional for private companies. So, there are some significant differences there.
Ron?
I was just wondering, there's one thing that we didn't get to, Darrell probably hit me when I say it, but, because Darrell and I voted differently on this. But with respect to the equity method, we had a project in our agenda to deal with the basis adjustment, and we dropped that. Does anyone feel like that should be considered by the PCC as a private company alternative? You?
Raise your hands? So, the question is, should the PCC take on the project that was dropped by the board for equity method basis adjustment for private companies?
I knew we'd get Pat. I knew we would get Pat back there.
So, him bolded.
I don't think this side heard it. What's going on?
Because they're closer to me.
Close to you, yeah. You're in the right one.
Well, we want to thank all of the panelists for being here today, especially Christine, our newest member, and we hope you'll return next year. The tone of this meeting has just been wonderful. We really appreciate the... We really appreciate the, the care and thoughtfulness that you've put into preparing your comments and the way you've listened to comments from the audience here. Thank you again very much. And the code word is NEAT, N-E-A-T. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.